We are back and we are taking up public hearing number three, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of ear amendment 24-09, conservation and open space. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Clyde Doolin. For the record, with me is Darrell DeLu, environmental planning administrator. Chapter nine had no objections, recommendations, or comments from the state agencies that reviewed it. In fact, DEP and Florida Fish and Wildlife had no comments at all on this. So we have no changes proposed from what was presented in October of 2024. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. DeLu to hit some of the high spots.
Yeah, Clyde, can you go to page 873, please?
Sure.
So as Clyde mentioned, there are minor changes proposed to chapter nine as shown in the table here. One is a map change to the use of best available data. Another is a consistency update to reference special upland habitats the same way throughout the chapter. And the third is striking a reference to a prohibited plant list due to a state preemption. And I'm going to keep it brief at that, and I'm here to answer any questions on any of the language in the chapter you may have. Thank you.
Questions?
I have some questions. I am on the table 9-1. Publicly owned or managed open spaces and resource-based parks. There seem to be so many discrepancies. I mean, Clifton Perry Beach goes from 1,800ths of an acre to 18 acres. Curtis goes from 2.6 acres to six. Jensen Beach goes from 19 to 22. Jensen Beach Causeway goes from 15 to 20. Maggie's Hammock Park is 21. I know that it's not. I know that it's 25, maybe 26. Hal Patey Oke Park got another 70 acres. I mean, just all over, I'm not going to belabor it, but those parks look like every one of them needs to be examined because I don't think you're accurate.
I believe this was updated by staff coordinating with the Parks and Rec Department, but we can go back over it between now and the 25th of March.
Yeah. I know that a number of them are wrong. Okay. Page 937. We've deleted the county composite wetland map. And instead, we are supplying, "An analysis of composite digital data sources can be a useful tool for environmental professionals to identify the presence or potential location of wetlands. However, Florida statutes, no number, requires the delineation of wetland boundaries in the field according to Florida's Unified Wetlands Delineation Methodology." Blah, blah, blah. So how do we determine wetlands?
So how we determine wetlands is typically done by one of two state agencies, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection or the South Florida Water Management District. So when we have an application for proposed development, one of those two agencies, if it's a larger development, it's usually South Florida. If it's a smaller, single-family type development, it's usually the DEP. We'll go out there and typically, an environmental consultant will flag a line based on wetland plants, wetland soils, and hydrology. And those factors are used in an analysis that the state would confirm, to confirm the location of wetlands.
So for individuals, we're relying upon DEP?
Yeah, applicants would. So we would have them-
They go out to every lot and make a delineation?
Yeah, anything that we're reviewing for proposed development, we ensure that they go to one of the state agencies, whomever may be regulating the wetlands. Like I said, larger development, that's typically South Florida. Smaller stuff, DEP.
Okay. No negative impacts shall be allowed in wetlands unless so authorized under waivers and exceptions in this element. Can you describe that?
Sure. So since the original comp plan of '82, we have authorized limited exceptions for wetland impacts, for things like bridges, preclusion of reasonable use, utilities. So we just added that to clarify the language because we didn't want there to be a conflict in one section of the code that said, "There are no negative impacts allowed," when we have other sections of code or comp plan language that said, "Yes, you may, under these very narrow circumstances, impact wetlands and develop property." So it's just a consistency language there to be consistent with the waivers that we do process and authorize in limited cases for wetland impacts.
And how does the South Florida Water Management District affirm wetland presence?
So there's a state methodology, again, that's based on hydrophytic plants or wetland plants. And there's different tests that the state uses, A, B, C, and D. So there's a combination of factors, be they wetland plants and wetland soils or hydroic soils, or wetland plants and hydrologic indicators, hydrology. And there's a test that's hardly ever used where it's a standalone prima facie test for hydroic soils only. But that's rarely used. So they're basically, the process typically is a consultant will go out and flag a line and do soil borings. And then depending on the project, the state might actually go in. And they have a very detailed wetland list where they would go in and do their own soil borings to confirm that, yes, indeed, there are hydroic soils here. They confirm the presence of the wetland vegetation and the hydrology. And there's a combination of those factors where you meet the state definition of a wetland.
And do we typically rely upon the environmental consultants? Wetland delineation?
So no. So, well, that's step one. So step one is somebody that wants to develop a property with a potential wetland will hire a consultant. They'll evaluate the site. They'll go out and flag what they believe to be the wetland line. But that doesn't get locked in until the state goes out and confirms the line. And sometimes they adjust the line. And then they'll issue some type of authorization, non-binding or binding jurisdictional determination to establish where that line is on the property.
And what have we used to replace figure 9-1?
So figure 9-1 is an old map that was developed based on some data that we had historically for hydroic soils, national wetlands inventory data from 1985, and some satellite imagery. And we're not saying that we're getting rid of that consideration. We're just saying that we have newer data and newer features that we can look at in a composite way to predict where wetlands are going to be. So this wetland composite map is just a map of probability. Areas that have the potential to have wetlands. But our concern is by publishing a map that said, "This is the wetland map of Martin County," that's not true. That's just an area where there might be a higher probability of having wetlands. So it's a little misleading to say that this is the wetland map of Martin County. So we're trying to move away from that, but still keep some of the factors that we use when we're evaluating properties in the office or when we have enforcement cases where wetlands are impacted. We look at a multiple number of layers, not just these older ones.
What are these new, newer, better resources that we use?
So one of the great resources we have are constantly updated aerial imagery. So we can look at aerials and historic aerials to know where the wetlands were and where the wetlands may be based on an aerial analysis. We have newer NWI layers. So Clyde just turned on the NWI layer from 2022 that kind of supplants the one in the old map from 1985. We have digital elevational information that can clue you in to where the low areas might be on a piece of property. A really good one, if you scroll down a little, Clyde, is one called the 2019 Digital Elevational Model. But again, these are just tools. These are not anything we use to say there's definitely a wetland there until it's actually gone through the process and been confirmed in the field.
So there's no mention of these new and improved NWI layers, wetland layers, digital layers, 2019 digital layers? No mention or requirement that they be used in the determination of wetlands?
Can you go to the language, Clyde? What page was that on? 937 to 938. So what we're saying here... Yeah, we don't specifically lay out the specific layers that we're using, but we do look at, like I said, a composite of different features when we're trying to determine where there's a likelihood to have wetlands out in the field.
These layers are not used to actually identify the boundary of the wetland. The field visit is.
There's a field visit?
That's what the environmental consultant does, and that's what the South Florida Water Management District does. It's a field visit. They physically walk the site.
They take soil borings. They, you know, look at the plants that are there. Look at hydrologic indicators that show an area that might be inundated.
Commissioner, if I might say that I think staff also visit the site. They just don't have the authority under the state statute to actually perform a jurisdictional. However, if there is a potential violation, staff will use these tools and say, "There appears to be a fill in a wetland." They then coordinate with the Water Management District to actually have the boundary verified, and then enforcement action continues on. But they do use all these tools in evaluating if there was a property that had been cleared for whatever activity. I don't want to put something out there and you go out there and it was filled. So what was the land before it was filled? And maybe it was, and so using the aerials, everything else. Then it's the presumption is there was a well. And working with the state of Florida then, who can make the jurisdictional determinations, they also use those tools. And then we could proceed forward with a violation. When there hasn't been a valuation, the same thing can occur where staff can go out and visit a site and syndicate to a property owner. From their professional judgment, there are wetlands on site, and they must be delineated before you can seek any approval from the county. And in that circumstances, if it was a small property owner, it may be working directly with the property owner themselves and the Water Management District on the delineation. Or it's hiring a professional to come in there as an intermediary so that the entire boundary is flagged before the professionals go out to verify it.
Here's a, and we're just kind of doing this on the fly here. But so I'm going to turn on, this is, these are two of the layers that are in the wetland composite map. The brown layer is the hydroic soil layer, and the blue layer is that old NWI layer. And then the composite of the two layers is in green. So if you see all of these areas, these are areas that would all be shown on that wetland map as wetlands-
Potential.
Potential, well, yeah. On the composite wetland map. So if you compare, so keep a mental image of that. If you compare that to what was delineated, you can see areas that... And we're doing this on the fly. I wasn't prepared to-
Only the green in that last was wetland. Only the green. None of the brown was wetland. It's been delineated as wetland in the field. This is a field delineated wetland.
So this is a map where we know where wetlands are because they've been verified by the state and locked in in our PAMP layer. But when you compare the two, and I apologize, I didn't have a specific site ready to show you, so it's easy to compare. But when you compare to what was delineated properly in the field in accordance with Florida statutes, as opposed to what this map is showing you, all these potential wetlands up here, you can see there's a difference and a discrepancy. See, there's nothing lighting up here that was delineated on this property as a wetland, but in the composite layer, somebody could misinterpret all of these areas as being wetlands where, when it was done properly in the field, it was not determined to be a wetland.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nicely explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Campi.
I know you're going to take a request for public comment, but short of that, and having had a nice discussion, I would move to continue this until March 25th, with my thanks for the work. I will second that motion as well.
Second.
Pending public comment, I will second it.
Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard.
Running over my scarf.
Carol Ann Leonard. Let's see. Some wetlands connect to each other underground, I've been told. I was wondering, can you determine that? And then even small ones matter. And then I'm also concerned that a developer picks the consultant, even though you have backups by the state and other things. I'm a little concerned about them picking the consultant. And then I was told that Martin County protects all the wetlands, and I hope that you will continue to do so. Thank you.
Do wetlands connect underground?
I've read that, yeah.
Yeah, there can be hydrologic connections, yeah. And we actually have a larger buffer required for what we call connected wetlands, typically along the shorelines, where we require a 75-foot buffer.
But the state only recognizes the superficial connection if all of the surface elements meet the criteria. Certainly, our groundwater is all interconnecting between the superficial aquifer from across the entire state. So water does connect between different bodies, although there are some wetlands that have impermeable layers underneath of them where you might have a perched wetland, like in some of the dune systems we have along the coastline, where it's almost, there's an organic and clay layer underneath that acts like a swimming pool. And basically, the wetland is sitting in this bowl on top. So there are very, we have it all here, right? So, but nonetheless, it's important to note that the jurisdictional boundary for purposes of private property rights is all at the surface, delineation, and how the, but how you develop around a wetland does take into account that aquifer and the connection. In fact, our code has a pretty extensive piece about requiring impermeable perias adjacent to wetlands to prevent lakes or other drainage features from inadvertently draining them.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. That motion passes four to one with Hurd dissenting.
Thank you.
Public hearing number four is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of ear amendment 2410, sanitary sewer element. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Samantha Lovelady with Martin County Growth Management. And I have Leo Ropati here with the Utilities Department. Okay. So we reviewed this before, back in October, and sent it off to the state. And the state had no comments that required action. And I will let Leo go over the fine points of the changes that have been made.
Good afternoon. Leo Ropati, Tech Services Administrator for Martin County Utilities. The first general housekeeping change has to do with Indian Town no longer being an investor-owned utility. It's now a municipal utility, so we corrected that. The first substantive change is on the table in policy 10.1B5. That's where we adjusted the level of service from 100 gallons per day per capita to 195 gallons per day per ERC for residential. And then in non-residential, the 0.1 gallons per day was not adequate for evaluating things like office space, restaurants, warehouse, and industrial. So we made that also 195 gallons per day per equivalent residential connection. Both of those changes are also consistent with our wastewater master plan that we maintain. So the comp plan and our master plan are consistent. We eliminated a couple of items in section 10.3. These were future missions that have been resolved through our launching and implementing our septic-to-sewer program. Since we kicked it off in earnest about six years ago, we've made sewer connections available for about 5,000 properties that were previously served by septic systems.
In how many years?
About six years. And finally, we had two new goals. 10.4A, to satisfy House Bill 1379, addressing the feasibility of connecting properties that are 50 or more residential lots to municipal sewer within a 10-year horizon. And then a second one looks for a 20-year wastewater plan. And we essentially have an ongoing wastewater master plan that we update on a regular basis. So that's already in place and part of what we do day to day.
Okay.
And with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Ropati or?
I have a question. On page 1232, this is policy 10.188. Sanitary sewer lines may be extended from the primary to serve the following previously approved projects. And there are seven projects. Why aren't all the rural lifestyle and Newfield and Martin Common and Park, Martin Commons Park and all those projects, why are they not listed?
Well, I know in terms of, like, Martin, there's Martin Gale Commons that's actually in there.
Martin Commons Park?
Yes. That has not been caught. It's been approved, but it hasn't gone through a municipal code. And so it hasn't been codified, or it's in the process of being codified.
How about all those rural lifestyle approvals? They're all outside the primary urban service boundary?
Elise Elder, Deputy County Attorney. So that's a future land use designation that has within its, within the text of the future land use that it can have water, so it's not an exception that would be listed in this group. So it has its own provision for water and sewer within the text.
It's a sanitary sewer line that's extended from the primary urban service district to serve a previously approved project?
It was approved at the time that, the project was approved at the time the text amendment was done. So it wasn't included in the exceptions because it has its own provision within the future land use designation for water and sewer.
But it's an exception.
It's not an exception because the future land use provides for it, is the way we were looking at it.
Could you clarify?
So these projects, these seven projects are projects that didn't qualify for extensions of sewer or water, but we created exceptions for them, and we listed them. We duly listed them. And then we've also approved all these other Atlantic Fields, Newfield, Three Lakes, The Ranch, on and on. We've approved those, and we've also approved extending water and sewer in those cases outside the urban service boundary, and yet they're not listed here.
Perhaps this would clarify. Those that are listed, those developments that are listed were approved and then were given exceptions. In the case of Atlantic Fields or any of the rural lifestyle, the allowance of water and sewer is contained within that land use designation. It is not an exception. It was in that, it didn't require an authorization or an exception. It was already made within the provision.
Put a finer point on it also. Newfield was a result of an expansion of the primary urban service district. It's not an exception.
Any further questions? It makes me wonder how much of the rest of these ear amendments are credible. Is there a motion? Yes.
Prior to you taking public comment, I appreciate the fact that you brought that up. I thought that the question was valid. I think the answers are valid, in my opinion. So I would make a motion to accept, no, to continue this item until March 25th after public comment. And I would say that, you know, like-minded folks can agree to disagree on some of the wordsmithing of this. I think that these are exceptions, and the items that you mentioned are written into the language of the original approval, so it wouldn't have been an exception.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any public, anybody from the public wish to address us? I don't see anybody. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
That motion passes three to two with Hurd dissenting. Thank you. We'll move on to public hearing number five, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of ear amendment 24-11, potable water. Afternoon.
Good afternoon again, commissioners. My name is Samantha Lovelady with Martin County Growth Management. And this is CPA 2411, which is the Potable Water Services Element and 10-Year Water Supply Plan. I have Anne Murray with me, the county's hydrogeologist. The state reviewed the changes that were made, and no comments require action. And I do want to make a note for you that on your consent agenda this morning, there was an interlocal agreement with the town of Jupiter Island regarding the joint planning area. So figures 11-1 and 11-2 need to be adjusted for that. And so we're recommending that those figures, 11-1 and 11-2, come back to you with the changes from the interlocal on the 25th, on March 25th. And with that, I'll hand it over to Anne to go-
Good job negotiating that, by the way, whoever negotiated it.
I wish I could take credit for it.
I did.
Take credit.
Did you do it? Well done.
I'm pretty sure it was one of the ones I did. So thank you. I appreciate that.
So the Anne Murray, county hydrogeologist. This is the Potable Water Services Element, and the key components of this are water demand projections and identification of current and future service areas and conservation and reuse. Wrapped into this chapter is a Water Supply Facilities Work Plan, which is done as a requirement of the state through the South Florida Water Management District. That plan is updated every five years. It's due up again in 2026. That work plan aligns with regional water supply plans and ensures adequate water supplies for future land use and development, as well as inclusion of alternative water supply projects, reuse programs, and conservation. The proposed changes are very minor here, mostly housekeeping references. It extends the planning period of the 10-year facility plan from 10 to 20 years. So we're looking forward another 10 years. There was some minor inclusions of nine-and-a-half-acre parcel that was a parcel adjacent to the Martin County's landfill that was included in the service area. And then there's minor revisions to the proposed modifications to the consolidated water system. And that just updates our plans for water treatment plants and balances the number of wells that we have in our system. And with that, I'll ask if you have any questions. And with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
Questions for Ms. Murray. Mr. Capps.
Do you care to comment on the differences between Florida and California when it comes to water supply?
Well, that's a great question. In my early career, I was actually in California and worked on some of those programs. And so I can say that California and Florida share a number of the same challenges. Corridor of the coastal area that is quite urbanized, water supplies that are certainly shared by environment and humans. I would say that in comparison, California has tremendous, many more challenges than Florida does. However, saying that, we have a growing population, we have much more urbanization, and our protective measures to not only protect the quantity of water, but the quality of water should be a priority. And I think that we do prioritize that here in Martin County.
One other thing, there's this thing called deep injection wells where they like send stuff back down, as I understand.
That's correct.
Is that okay? I mean, like for water quality purposes, are there safeguards in place that would prevent contamination and that kind of thing?
Yes, so we use our injection wells for effluence. So we, that is irrigation quality reuse water that is sent to injection wells, only in times when we can't use it for the purposes of irrigation to distribute it. So that would be the rainy day, the rainy times of the year.
Thank you.
Of course.
Ms. Lovelady, you can probably answer this question. So the sanitary sewer, sewer element did not include as an exception to service provided outside the primary urban service boundary, the 170, 107 acre parcel by Indian Town? Is that because they're not served by sewer?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So this, the water element includes as an exception, the parcel, the 107 acre parcel that the county owns east of Indian Town? So it says that's an exception for water, but it wasn't an exception for sewer. Is that because we don't, we didn't extend sewer lines to that parcel?
Utilities is telling us that's served by Indian Town, not by Martin County Utilities. They could probably.
But the water is served by Martin County.
The water.
It's what it says in the.
Can you tell me what page you're on, please?
Yeah, I'm on page 1521.
1521.
The Indian Town Fairgrounds property is in the Indian Town Service Area.
What I'm asking is, so the water element, the potable water element includes that parcel as an exception to primary urban service boundary requirement. However, that same parcel, which presumably is also served by sewer, is not included.
Commissioner, I think we'll probably need to review that before it comes back to the next item to see.
I'd like to have your answer, please.
Yeah.
At the top of page 1233, there's the exception for the 107 acre parcel.
I see it. Why is it not on page 1232, as listed as parcel number eight?
I think these, and this is my guess, is that we add these exceptions every once in a while and then, and then this just came in on its own and wasn't added to that list.
It's a different policy.
Was it an exception?
It was an exception.
Commissioner, if we could just look at this further and look at it and come back with you on the 25th, I'm not sure.
It may need to be in there, Commissioner. We'll just need to verify on that list separate, as you suggested.
Okay. Is there a motion? I've already forgotten.
So you want a, a motion to continue it to March 25th and at that time we will?
To verify the requirement to add the exception, the county parcel into the list of exceptions.
Instead of its own policy.
Is that on the sewer element or the water element?
The sewer element.
Okay, so we, okay. So that's amending the, the last motion for approval.
Yes.
So this is the motion for this element, right? Do we need to?
Well, this is on potable water, correct?
No, we're still, this is, the question that's, that's being addressed now is going back to the sewer element and.
We'd have to revisit it.
We'll make sure it's consistent throughout the comp plan.
I think you could make a motion to approve this, but also direct staff to review the prior item to, for, to bring back the sewer element.
Okay.
I'll move to continue this item to March 25th and to direct staff to review the previous sewer item.
And this one.
Yep.
Pending public comment.
Second.
Is there any public comment? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. That motion passes four to one with her dissenting.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, we move on to public hearing number six, a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of year amendment 24-12, solid and hazardous waste.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Lovelady with the Martin County Growth Management Department. I have with me Sam Amerson, the Utilities Director. And this has been reviewed by the state and the state had no comments that require action. And I will let Sam take over from here.
Thank you, Samantha. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Sam Amerson, Utilities and Solid Waste Department. The proposed changes were minor. They were all housekeeping in nature. For example, we changed references to the Village of Indian Town, a couple of references to garbage collection provided by the City of Stewart and Town of Jupiter Island. We updated some dates and terms, but there were no changes to the goals, objectives, or policies being proposed. Those are all underlying the proposed changes. There are a few strike throughs, but as I said, mostly housekeeping in nature.
Is there any public comment? Mr. Campy.
Short and sweet presentation. When there's not changes, it's appropriate. I would make a motion that we continue this item until March 25th.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearing number seven, which is a, pardon me, a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of year amendment 24-13, Drainage and Natural Groundwater Aquifer Recharge Element.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Lovelady with Martin County Growth Management. And I have with me Amy Eason from Public Works. And the state has reviewed this chapter and there were no comments that require action. I do want to point something out for you, though. that the board approved during the transmittal hearing. This piece, this sub-element was accidentally not included in the paperwork that went to Tallahassee. But we did send them the language later and we spoke with them and DEP, South Florida Water Management District, and Florida Commerce had no problems with this language, even though it got missed out on the actual paperwork of transmittal hearing. And other than that, I'll let Amy go over whatever changes she wants to go.
Amy Eason, Environmental Resource Engineer. There are several housekeeping items within this, removing and updating out-of-date references, along with removing Indian Town. There was also information concerning the Loxahatchee River that was not included in the original comp plan, so we just sort of added that in as Ms. Lovelady just said. There's other information that was added on updating the MPDS program. We added resiliency elements into it to be consistent with what we are doing as a county. We've also updated information concerning water supply as well because the aquifer information is in there, the, to the latest Upper East Coast Water Supply Plan. And also included references to the C44 Reservoir STA. We also added green infrastructure to policy 13.3A, and I will entertain any questions you may have.
Questions? Is there any public comment?
Move to continue to March 25th.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes, there is.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms.
Next up is a public hearing quasi-judicial, number one, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of an amendment to the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning classification for Gaston Family Holdings.
Commissioner, this is a quasi-judicial.
Oop, yes, indeed it is. Commissioner Vargas, any ex parte disclosures?
None that I know of, but they've been filed.
Commissioner Capps?
If I have any, they have been filed.
If I have any, they've been filed. Commissioner Campy?
I have filed the fact that I had none.
And Commissioner Heatherington?
If any, they've been filed.
Excellent. Let's see. Mr. Senate, have you passed all your information to the clerk?
Yes, I'm turning in the agenda item and a copy of my work history to be filed as exhibit one.
Excellent. Would anyone like to, is anyone, if anyone is going to be supplying sworn testimony, please stand up, raise your hand, right hand, and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Proceed, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm John Senate, Senior Planner with Growth Management. This is a request by Gunster Yocley and Stewart on behalf of Gaston Family Holdings for a proposed amendment to the county zoning atlas to change the zoning district classification for an approximately 2.15 acre marine sales and service facility from the current B1 Business District and R3A Liberal Multiple Family District to the GC General Commercial District. The site is located at 4900 Southeast Federal Highway in Stewart. Included with this application is a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. There are no intervenors for this application. The site is outlined in red. It's located approximately 120 feet south of the intersection of Southeast Carroll Street and Southeast Federal Highway. To the north of the site, you can see the Ace of Karts facility, as well as the Napa Auto Parts Facility at the corner of Carroll and Federal. To the east of the site across US1, you can see commercial buildings, including Sky King Fireworks, O'Reilly Auto Parts, and Harley-Davidson. To the south of the site is the Sunshine Mobile Manor Community. The area to the west of the site is predominantly mobile and modular homes. And then to the northwest, you can see the Natalie Estates Mobile Home Community. The future land use designation of the property and the adjoining properties to the west and north is general commercial. To the east across US1, you can also see the general commercial future land use designation. And the areas to the southwest and northwest in the pink here is the mobile home future land use designation. The east side of the property is owned B1 Business District, while the west side of the property is R3A Liberal Multiple Family District. Both of these existing zoning districts are category C districts. The adjoining property to the north and west is also zoned R3A. To the east across US1, we see the GC General Commercial District. To the south, we can see the TP Zoning District. And the area to the west is the RT Zoning District in brown. This application is being processed as a mandatory rezoning to a category A district, which implements the policies for the general commercial future land use designation. There is one standard category A zoning district that both implements the general commercial future land use designation and allows the current use of the property as a marine sales and service facility, and that is the GC General Commercial District. PUD zoning is also an additional option, however, the applicant is requesting the GC General Commercial District. These are the development standards for the proposed GC district. Maximum building coverage of 60%, maximum height 40 feet, minimum open space 20%. For a one-story structure, the front setback would be 25 feet, rear would be 20, and side would be 10 feet. These are the conditions supporting the requested GC zoning district, the existing future land use designation of general commercial for the site, the site's location along Southeast Federal Highway, which is a major arterial roadway, the existing use of the site as a marine sales and service facility. The GC zoning district also allows uses which are consistent with the uses permitted in the existing B1 and R3A zoning districts. This matter was heard before the LPA on March 6th. They voted four to zero with one absence to approve the rezoning. Development review staff have found the Gaston Family Holdings rezoning application to comply with all applicable regulations and the comprehensive growth management plan as detailed in the staff report. Recommended action is to move that the board receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as exhibit one. Move that the board adopt a resolution amending the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning district designation on the subject site from B1 Business District and R3A Liberal Multiple Family District to GC General Commercial District. That concludes my presentation.
Questions from Mr. Senate? Applicant. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Bob Rains. I'm a land use attorney with the Gunster Law Firm. Here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, I'd like to begin the presentation just by stating for the record that we turned in the proof and notices to the surrounding property owners at the LPA meeting for this meeting also. Second of all, I'd like to just state that we, you know, have received the staff report and we agree with the conclusions and the comments and the recommendations in that staff report. And staffs, I think, did an excellent job with this. I would like to just point out a couple of points or emphasize a couple of items. Again, this is a mandatory rezoning. The category C is the reason for the R3A, which is inconsistent with the current land use. And the GC zoning district is the only zoning district that implements what is currently happening on the site. You know, we usually talk about rezonings and we don't talk about what can be done there on-site specific, but this is a rare case because we're already have an existing business that's been there for quite some time. As a matter of fact, the commercial uses on this property date back to the early 60s. And then in the 90s is the, the marinas were in place, the marine cell service. And my client has purchased and owned this property and operated as marine cell service since 2005, six?
2005.
2005. So this is a long time existing use, successful business in town. And then I think the last thing to emphasize is, you know, the zoning code came into place in 1968. in 1968. It put on the R3A and the B1. And the GCs that we're requesting is consistent with those uses that were allowed under the current B1 and R3A. So this dates, these uses date back to 1968. So with that, we would respectfully request you accept staff's recommendation and approve GC, and we'll be glad to answer any questions. My client's here to answer any questions that you may have for him.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes, it's my understanding that this original code is from 1967?
I believe 1968, Commissioner.
Are there? Okay. And so the reason why you are here is because the marine sales service company was already operating on another adjacent parcel that wasn't zoned correctly. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, it's correct. I mean, the current zoning, the R3A, well, it would have allowed those uses to, the property has a GC. So the, I think, the question, Commissioner, is the R, one of the zonings, the B1, is consistent with the general commercial land use under the Category C. The R3A today is not.
Yes.
But it's not to use, it's, it's the zoning that was put on the property.
Yes, I understand, and that's how we regulate, by zoning also.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the reason you're in front of us, because you are trying to make this uniform this property, is that correct?
Yes.
Is only going to be used for marine sales and service, or maybe another commercial use? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's the applicant's.
I was looking at the applicant over there. He's shaking his head vigorously at me. Uh-huh, I understand.
Commissioner Heatherington?
As we've heard from staff and the applicant, it's a mandatory rezoning, and I would move pending public comment, a motion to accept staff's recommendation for approval.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oops, sorry. Commissioner Capps?
Yes. A portion of this is zone residential, was that it? No, no, liberal multi-family district. Is that a residential classification?
And the staff can correct me if I'm wrong. The R3A was probably back in 1968 the best zoning you could have in place because it allowed almost everything. It allowed commercial uses, and it allowed residential uses, and so if I'm wrong on that, but it was probably the zoning you would have coveted back in 1968. So, yes.
Okay, so it was a very broad?
Yes, yes, sir. It was probably the broadest of my understanding of that.
Okay. What I was getting at is, like in the future, when we consider things going from residential to commercial, does that kick in live-local thoughts and concerns, and could live-local apply? Because live-local allows high-density apartment buildings on commercial property.
Yeah, yes, sir. That, I mean, that is true. Live-local, you know, you could do a live-local project on, on something like this. I think, two, two things. Obviously, we have a long time existing use in this, it's got a business that's been going on for a long time, it's not going anywhere, hopefully, for a lot of reasons. And the second thing, I think, just from a practical standpoint, this is a small piece of property, so, you know, it, it, there's some, you know, economic aspects to that live-local that I think a lot of people don't realize. It's not going to be able to be used effectively from, and when I say effectively, from an economic standpoint, because you, you still can't really get enough units at, at that kind of price. I think the live-local is going to apply more to larger general commercial tracks.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we go on to quasi-judicial public hearing one, which is request approval of the Third Amendment to the Discovery Plan Unit Development, including a revised master and phasing plan. This is quasi-judicial. Commissioner Vargas, any ex parte disclosures?
If I have any, they've been disclosed.
And Commissioner Capps?
If I have any, they have been filed.
I don't have any, and they've been filed. Commissioner Campy?
I don't have any, and they've been filed.
And Commissioner Heatherington?
I don't have any, and that's been filed.
And Mr. Elam, have you sent all your stuff to the clerk?
I have a copy of my work history and the agenda item to turn in as Exhibit One.
Terrific. If there's anybody who's going to be providing sworn testimony, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Brian Elam, Principal Planner with the Growth Management Department. Last Friday, staff was made aware that there was a change in ownership from Discovery Hope Sound Investors LLC to Atlantic Fields Club LLC. Updated documents, including the PUD agreement, disclosure of interest, and power of attorney were submitted yesterday with these corrections. I will defer to the applicant to provide more information related to this.
If I may, Chair? I have those documents, and I'm going to give them to the clerk so they're in the quasi-judicial proceedings.
Okay.
And I provided the, the commission aides with a copy of the disclosure yesterday, so everybody can review it for this vote.
Okay.
So just for the record.
All right, so this is a request by Lucido and Associates on behalf of Atlantic Fields Club LLC for approval of the Third Amendment to the Discovery PUD zoning agreement, including a revised master and phasing plan for the purpose of adjusting the golf clubhouse and kids' club adventure park recreation tracks, and adding a lake clubhouse within the lake adjacent to the clubhouse tract. Included is a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. Discovery PUD is an approximately 1,530-acre property located north of Bridge Road, approximately one mile east of the I-95 interchange at 2935 Southeast Bridge Road in Hope Sound. The existing zoning district on the property is the Discovery PUD zoning agreement with the rural lifestyle underlying future land use. This is an excerpt of Sheet One of the Revised Master Site Plan, which documents minor changes to the limits of the clubhouse tract and adventure park tracks. Another change is the addition of the lake clubhouse within the adjacent lake tract. The Revised Master Site Plan is Exhibit D within the Discovery PUD zoning agreement, and these minor changes to the PUD zoning agreement exhibit require this amendment to be heard in a public meeting. So the tract, the changes in the tract from the previously approved master site plan in this are essentially, from what I have seen, is the shorelines for the clubhouse tract here, and essentially the shoreline for the kids' club adventure park track, if you, if you were to look at the previous site plan. Then also the addition of the lake clubhouse here. Second exhibit, Exhibit D1, which is part of this amendment, is the phasing plan. Essentially, the changes here is they've taken and broken down some of the previous phases into smaller phases, more manageable chunks, I guess you could say. For instance, this Phase 1D pasture recreation tract, it used to be part of Phase 1A, and some of these other phases were in 2B, 2D, 2E, and 2C, I believe, were in Phase 2B. So they've broken up phases into smaller chunks, and so we have a revised phasing plan to represent that. Development review staff have found the Discovery, sorry. The Atlantic Fields Club LLC, application to comply with all applicable regulations in the comprehensive growth management plan as detailed in the staff report. Review of this application is not required by the local planning agency, and staff recommends approval of this application. We move the board to receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as Exhibit One, and move the board to approve the Third Amendment to the Discovery PUD zoning agreement, including the revised master and phasing plans. That concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. Vargas.
Are there equestrian facilities here? Am I thinking correctly about this?
There are equestrian facilities.
Is that open to the public?
I believe that there, they will be offered some events open to the public.
Does anybody out there know?
Yeah, we got a presentation.
Okay, oh, well, let's listen to your presentation, then.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. For the record, Bob Rains with the Gunster Law Firm here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you again for your time this afternoon. I'd like to begin, first of all, thank staff, we, on the air, on the owners, and working with us to get that corrected, and we apologize to you all for the late notice on that, but we do, we do have that all in order, and we appreciate it, and we'll be glad to answer any questions if you have anything on that. I would like to just begin by asking Mr. Elam a couple of quick questions, if I could, with, Madam Chair, if that's okay? Thank you. Mr. Elam, I know you turned in your resume, but could you just, for the record, for the public, state your work history, please? Just a brief description?
I have about 25 years' experience in private sector and in, in public service as a project manager. The last three years as a planner here, and the previous seven years as a planner for, and project manager for Palm Beach County.
And, and you're responsible for putting together the staff report, assembling all the experts and the department heads, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're also responsible for Section F and Section G in the staff report? Is that correct?
Yes.
And if I could, just real quick, so Section F is the determination of compliance with the comprehensive growth management plan requirements, and that's the Growth Management Department, which is you? And your findings read, staff has reviewed this application and finds that it complies with the LDRs as detailed within this report. Staff recommends approval of this development application as consistent with the guidelines and standards of the applicable comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies as implemented in the LDRs. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is, is that still your finding, sir?
Yes.
And then, Section G also is yours? Determination of compliance with land use, site design standards, zoning, and procedural requirements?
Yes.
And your findings there? Staff has reviewed this application and finds that it complies with the LDR as detailed within this report, and recommends approval of this development application as consistent with the guidelines and standards of the applicable comprehensive goals, objectives, and policies as implemented in the LDRs?
Yes.
And that still stands, sir?
Yes.
The recommendation? Thank you. At this time, Commissioner, I'm going to ask Morris Crady and Rick Melchiori to come up. They'll make a presentation. Mr. Crady first, but just to make it flow better, I'll just go through their resumes, both at the beginning, and then they can just go, if that's okay. So, Mr. Crady, can you introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, I'm Morris Crady, Senior Partner with Lucido and Associates.
And have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
And can you, can you give us a brief description of your education background and work history, please?
Yes, I'm a professional land planner, certified for the last 35 years through the American Institute of Certified Planners, and also been, worked for Martin County for 10 years as a development planner, and been working now in Martin County for 43 years in land planning.
And can you describe the paper I'm handing you, sir?
That's my updated resume.
Okay, thank you. I would like for the record to reflect, I'm turning that in to the clerk. And then, Mr. Melchiori, could you step up, please, sir? Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Rick Melchiori. I'm General Manager at Becker Holding and Senior Vice President of Development for Atlantic Fields and Discovery Land Company.
And have you been sworn in, sir?
I have.
And can you give us a brief description of your work history, educational work history?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil and Structural Engineering. I have been a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida since 1994, and I've been working in the design, construction, and permitting of residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments for almost 35 years.
And can you describe the document I'm handing you, sir?
My CV.
And is that an updated CV, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I would like for the record to reflect, and I'm also turning that in to the clerk at this time. So, Mr. Crady, thank you.
Thank you. I can borrow your mouse, click. Again, what I'm going to do is just briefly go over the application that we're requesting, and then Rick's going to talk about the status of the project, the public benefits, and the, and the, including the public access. So what we're here today for is just the revised master and phasing plan, and, and as was mentioned by Brian, it's just to address the tract boundary, because the whole property's been platted now. So as we go through development, you know, the lake tract kind of has been modified a little bit. We haven't decreased the amount of lake, but the boundary between the lake tract and the amenity tracks are, vary a little bit, and we want to make sure that when we submit a final site plan application for, let's say, the clubhouse tract, it's consistent with the plat, and also consistent with the master plant. So we're making those phase lines consistent with the platted track lines. And we'll be in, in the future, with a replat of this tract that we're talking about, that will adjust those lines. So we also add detailed description to create additional phases, and it's, and that's to be consistent also with the platted track line, so that when we come with a final site plan, that site plan is tied to a specific platted tract that can be legally described, and there's no confusion as to a portion of a, of a tract being, having a final site plan. And then the last thing we did was we added a clubhouse on the lake track, so I'll show you that in a moment. But what we're doing today does not affect any of the public benefits. It doesn't change the density, it doesn't increase the intensity of development, there's no change to landscape area, drainage area, no change to open space or any, or the, or the habitat restoration area that's under construction. So I think you're pretty aware where the, where the property is located. We're surrounded on, on the, on the north and east by the Atlantic Ridge State Park. And you can see, this shows the, the, the roads that have been approved within the project. And on the next slide, this slide, we overlay the plat onto the current aerial. So this is the platted limits of the project, and what we're changing today is just the limits of this tract, and that's, that forms the boundary between the clubhouse track here. We have an adventure park track for, that will be a future amenity. So we're really changing, and also the, the boundary between the lake track and the golf course. But none of this affects the lots or the size of lots. So there's no increase in intensity, no increase in density, and really has no impact on the development. So to put it in a clearer terms, the revised master phasing plan, we, we created, for instance, like we said, this used to be one phase, but we're coming in with, you know, a site plan for Phase 3B and Phase 3C, so staff wanted us to break those out into two separate phases, so it wouldn't be confusing. The tract that we're revising is called Phase 1, is part of Phase 1B, which is the, the golf course and lake track. And then that, and again, the boundary between, this is the adventure park track that we're doing, that's changed. So the, the change that we're doing by way of this PUD is very limited, but at the same time, I think it's important for the new Commissioners especially to, to understand the public benefits that were originally negotiated with the County Commission, and also the status of completion of those public benefits and the overall project status. So Rick Melchiori is out there every day, and he's managing the project and making sure everything is done in accordance with the, with the approved project. So I'm turning it over to Rick.
Madam Chair, a member of the Commission, I appreciate the time to be able to come up here and kind of update you as to where we stand. As Morris said, we're, we're in the process of making some minor adjustments on the master site plan. If any of you have ever kind of worked in this arena, sometimes you understand that golf courts, architects, and planners have a tendency to try to shave outside the lines a little bit, so we want to just kind of get everything back in and get it where it belongs. As you're aware, or some of the Commissioners that have been here previously, we did have several public benefits that were associated with our land use and our PUD, and I'd like to kind of just update you a little bit on where we stand with some of those. First one is the donation of the facilities that you're seeing on the, on the screen right now to the Atlantic Ridge Preserve State Park. That transaction was actually completed on March 3rd. The closing took place, and that facility now belongs to the state. We did go ahead and provide the county attorney with the closing documents to verify that we have met the requirements. In conjunction with this, they have easements for public access, so we'll now work with the park as far as programming and assisting them with, you know, whatever they'd like to do with the facility. So hopefully, you know, more of the public is able to enjoy it.
And you built the road from Bridge Road to it?
Correct. There is a boundary road that goes up the east side of the property that's completed, and obviously there's easements that were given to both South Florida and TIF. You gave me where the park is owned by both entities. It's 50/50 ownership between South Florida Water Management District and TIF, so we had to get agreements with both and...
So we had to get agreements with both and grant easements, et cetera, to both. One of the other public benefits is the habitat restoration area. As you can see on the overall master site plan, it's in the upper left-hand corner, which is the northeast corner of the property. This gives you a little bit more of a blow up of what it is. But basically, we are restoring 125 acres of habitat back to its original condition. This is, basically mirrors what's in the Atlantic Ridge State Park and carrying that through. In conjunction with this and with our construction of our utility connections, we're going to go ahead and rebuild some of the drainage infrastructure that's in the park that quite frankly hasn't been maintained for, for several years. So we've agreed to go ahead and redo their ditches, update their control structures. The ones that are there, quite frankly, are, you know, falling apart. So we're going to go ahead and take care of that for them in conjunction with this. This is underway, it has not been completed yet. The construction easements to work in the park were all part of the program that closed on March 3rd. So basically, all of the permits are in hand now to be able to do this. So we're going to start commencing the earthwork here probably within the next couple of weeks. One of the other benefits was the donation of the Hope Sound Historic Train Station back to the Historical Society in Hope Sound. Quite a bit longer of a process than we had hoped, but fortunately, it was delivered back on January 26th. I think there was a really great YouTube video that shows the actual move if you want to watch it. But we are pleased to say that that has also been taken care of and addressed. So hopefully, the Historical Society will be able to, you know, rebuild it, reconstruct it, and have a great facility for the residents of Hope Sound. The, one of the other benefits, or one of the other things that we agreed upon was to go ahead and put the Becker Tree Farm into a permanent ag easement. That's a three-party agreement, or easement, that was between the Becker family, the county, and Conservation Florida. Again, that was completed on December 6th, so that has been taken care of. And those documents, obviously, as you are a party to, have been recorded with the county. One of the last things that we've done is some enhanced stormwater management that we're working through. Where we stand right now is the majority of the lakes inside the property have been constructed. The interconnects have been placed. However, the lakes are not full. There's really no water in them. So basically, everything that we do right now is being captured on site. Ultimately, in addition to maintaining our own stormwater management systems, we are taking in off-site flow from the Thomas Produce piece, which is a 317-acre tract that's immediately to our east. We also carry through and flow through 1,600 acres from the south, which is the Sea Level Ranch. That was previously, basically drains into the right-of-way. That right-of-way connects through our system and ultimately outfalls through the Hope St. Lucie Conservancy District ditches to the north and into the South Fork. Internally, we have one discharge point, which is in our northwest corner. It comes out of what you see here as basin four. There is a control structure. Our post-development discharge is actually quite highly regulated. Under normal circumstances, when you file your permit applications, you would do a pre-development analysis and then a post-development analysis. And obviously, your discharge post-development cannot exceed your pre-development. In this instance, because we're discharging into a Hope St. Lucie ditch, they actually have a more stringent requirement for their allowable discharge. So we have to meet that. That is obviously part of our South Florida Water Management District permits and to be able to show that we've maintained it. I know that about a month ago, there was a bit of a dust-up in the newspaper about some discharges in the South Fork. And I believe it was the 31st of January, we had inspections from both FDEP and South Florida Water Management District. They were on site for the better part of the day, going through all of our systems. Upon completing that inspection, we were cleared that none of the discharge that was going to the South Fork was coming off of our property. We have gotten clean bill of health from South Florida and from DEP. And they do, do conduct regular inspections, which we're obviously open to, including county staff conducts regular inspections. Just to give you a little bit of the timeline where we're at. Our land use, master site plan, PUD and first phase of development was approved between, or in October of '23. Phase 2A, which is our primary development permits, was approved in March of '24. The plat was recorded in April of 2024. And today, we're obviously in March of 2025, looking for our revision. A little bit of where we stand with the project itself. Our short course was completed in December of '23. In January of '24, we commenced primary infrastructure, which is obviously water, sewer, and those type of things. In October of '24, we began construction of our first residences. Might have been a little bit later, in October, November. December, we went ahead and go, and put the tree farm into conservation. January of '25, the championship course was completed. That is in the process of growing in and probably be, starting to be played, hopefully Friday, if everything goes well. We anticipate completion of all of the infrastructure by December of '25. We have two amenities that are currently under construction, our golf house and performance center. Again, both of those should be completed sometime in late '25. As I mentioned, completed not only the transfer of the train station, the donation to the park. So those have all been done. And then we're working currently on organic farm facilities. And you'll see equestrian, clubhouse, and various phases coming up in front of you as we start permitting those. With respect to Commissioner Vargas' question regarding the equestrian, we do have a full program that's being, in the process of being refined right now. There will be portions of it that will be open to the public, for example, polo matches and things like that on the various weekends. The facilities themselves will remain to be private. These are just a little bit of progress photos on where we stand. You can see these are holes 10, 11, and 12, some of the bunker construction and growing. You see here where we've got a little bit of, some of the lakes are getting filled, they've been kind of moving around. 13, 14, 15, and 16, which were actually some of the last holes that were completed. 16 was grassed in probably late October, early November. We do have a number of infrastructure projects are continuing going on, including sanitary sewer, water mains. There's a bridge installation that's ongoing. Roadway construction, we've now paved about 50% of the loop roads, or have been asphalted now. Our entrance is currently being landscaped and cleaned up. You know, it's just basically a continual process. Unfortunately, when you're on 1,500 acres, a continual process takes a long time still. Give you a little bit of where we stand as an entity. Right now, we have 137 employees that are directly, direct employees of Atlantic Fields that are on payroll at this point. On any given day, we probably have close to another 150 contractors on site performing various tasks between infrastructure, building, construction, et cetera. And we are still hiring, so we do have some open positions. In closings so far, we've done slightly over half a billion dollars in plan closings. We have another $175 million that's contracted that will close here shortly, or probably within the next 90 days. And based on the progressions right now, we should anticipate about $12 million in additional tax revenue to the county in calendar year, it's going to be '26. And that basically competes my, or completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Yes, Commissioners, that concludes our presentation. So as Mr. Melchiori said, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes, I think you mentioned rebuilding infrastructure in the park. How much infrastructure are you?
So the, the park has some various drainage, you know, ditches and canals and things like that. One of them is on the north end of our property. The canal hasn't been maintained in probably 30 or 40 years, and I assume it's budgetary constraints with the park. So we agreed in conjunction with, you know, the, the transfer of the facilities and what we're getting from that is the utility easements to access our utilities up in Sea Branch. So we agreed that we would go ahead, reconstruct that ditch for them, that's an existing conveyance. On the west side of that conveyance, there's a control structure that's fairly dilapidated. So we agreed that we would go ahead and rebuild that for them. So those, that's primary.
Mentioned that, that area is also full of Brazilian pepper. So when he says maintenance, it's just not rebuilding the ditch, it's removing tons of Brazilian pepper trees that have overgrown in that area.
Commissioner Capes?
I want to thank you for all you did in helping get the train station into town. And, and I'll mention too that I would thank my predecessor, Commissioner Harold Jenkins, for working with you to lay the groundwork for this. I, I, I think he was probably the person who had the original vision for, for bringing it into town. At least I will ascribe that to him today. I, I'm pretty sure that's true. And I had a question about the Atlantic Ridge connection, you know, and the road. And what, what is yet to be done from your standpoint? And do you know anything about what the state park system would need to do to enhance that for the public? And how long before we can start enjoying that, you know?
Well, the infrastructure from our standpoint is complete. There's an access road that's, that goes up the east property line to the park facilities. At some point in time, I expect them to come in and actually gate it because they like to control the access to the park based on their, you know, when they have operating hours, et cetera. I'll be honest, because it's closed March 3rd and we're just sort of getting into the now operating end of it, I really don't know what their plans are. We, as an entity, have reached out. We agreed that we would help them if they needed, you know, construction of parking areas or things like that, we would work with them on it. You know, I think at this point now, it's, it's, it's really going to be the park's sort of control on, you know, how fast and the pace they want to go.
I know some of the natural areas in Martin County, there's like an iron gate up with a lock on there. And you can get like a special permit to go in and, and explore. Hopefully, it's not going to be like that, where hopefully, we can just go and enjoy the place without having to call somebody and get something unlocked and that kind of thing, but.
I think it's going to be more of a manned operation where it's, you know, they're going to have set park hours where it would be, you know, eight to five or whatever it might be. I know they, I know they want to control access because, and I think they intend to actually have somebody living on property. But like I say, these are all things that are up in the air that the park has to work through.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Campy?
Thank you, Mr. Melchiori, thank you. The timeline, it's weird when you lay it out. First off, it's so.
I can't figure that one out myself.
No, it's, it's such a long timeline, you have to zigzag it, doesn't fit on one slide. But having been here since the beginning, and I know in the beginning with some of the foundational work, it was challenging. But I've always been a big proponent of the project. Having done my research when it was originally, when I met with you the first time ever and, and we talked about, you know, with Tom Hurley, about, hey, this is an idea that's thinking about coming to Martin County, to Bridge Road. I did my research on the Discovery Land Company. And, and I strongly recommend anyone that's listening to do the same thing. Just Google Discovery Land Company and look at the projects that they have put globally. For us to have one here in Martin is remarkable. It's a remarkable advantage for us. I wrote down some of the things. The environmental benefits that you rambled off quickly because you have to move through your presentation are remarkable because there was a lot of broken connectivity there that you all, at your expense, connected those natural historic flowways that without you doing it, would not have been done. The equestrian, you know, you showed the one picture of that facility that was owned on this property that was donated to the state. I would, I would render a guess to say it'll probably be one of the nicest facilities within the state park inventory of their buildings. And the road, which sounds like no big deal while you pave the road from bridge up to the thing. First off, it's very far and very expensive. And without it, your donation wouldn't have had the same kind of impact. The other advantage that some of us will realize is that that whole Atlantic Ridge Preserve, the southern portion of it was basically off limits because you'd have to, the trailheads began off of Cove Road next to Anderson Middle School. One, most people didn't know to go there. And two, even if you did, it didn't really allow you access to the full beauty and nature of the park because you couldn't get too much onto the real heart of the property from the north. But you can now, maximizing the entire project. Economically, you just scratched the surface on what it'll mean. Yes, you know, there's a tax base for us, but the, the economic advantages of how many subcontract, even for, first, the project being constructed, all of the subs, all of the contractors and employees that get to work on it. But then, once it's done, the employment opportunities, but the, the residual, the ripple effect in our communities, those folks that will go and shop in Hope Sound and elsewhere in the county, remarkable. And then, one of the advantages of having Discovery Land Company is they are building a world-class facility that some people, I hope, don't lose sight of. It is, I'm not even saying nationally, I'm saying world-class golf, world-class recreation, world-class architecture. And then the philanthropic benefits that I think your project, which was the first one out of the gate, and then there's a couple others now, will change the not-for-profit and the, and the philanthropic landscape for Martin County. We are blessed to have so many not-for-profits, which can work for and against us because they have to compete for the same dollars. And I know that the Discovery Land Company as an organization is extremely generous and that the future residents that will look like a who's who, a global who's who, they are exceptionally generous because there's an expression I've been using, people give where they live. If you are a billionaire or a, what's the new word now, a sentinel millionaire or something, if you have $100 million? If they've never heard of Martin County, if they've never heard of some of our organizations, they would never know to donate to them. And I know that it's already started. So you put all this together for you all to deal with a lot of black and blues that came in the beginning of the process and to keep at it for us, I think is terrific. And I would say personally, thank you. And, and very happily make the motion to accept staff's recommendation for your changes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
As you can tell, I like the project.
You have 138 someone, how many employees will you have at completion of the project, do you think?
I'd build out once we're, we should probably 400 to 450, somewhere in that number. It'll fluctuate in the summers because typically, a lot of our staff will go to other destinations more summer-oriented, up to the north and that type of stuff. But during season, probably between 400 and 450.
Right.
But that's not including the people that work for the residents. That's.
No, 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 that's just, that's just our staff. That does not include, you know, contractors coming in, people, you know, whether it's cleaning, you know, service industries, et cetera.
Great. I think this project by far has some of the best and encompassing public benefits that I've seen on a project in a very long time, if not, you know, the most I've ever seen on a project. So I'm certainly happy to support it. I'm going to second Commissioner Campy's motion. And I, you think about things up here that you have to consider. And that whole timeline, that was a whole challenging process. And when you look at how things are coming out, I, again, there's challenging. But the deciding factor to me sometimes is that in 30, 40 years from now, what, what are the residents going to think? You know, what will I, you know, see as this, if I look back onto it? And I think you're doing exactly what you said you were going to do. I'm proud to have supported you. And I think in 30, 40 years, I'm going to be even more appreciative of what you've done there with the 800 acres of permanent conservation and the fact of all the public benefits. So I will gladly support it with a second.
I probably won't be around in 30 or 40 years.
Oh, come on.
I'll have my 100th birthday there.
Going back to the, the pollution event, what other activities are happening in that area of the county that could have produced that bloom?
I have no idea.
Is anything else under construction in the area?
Not that I'm aware of.
And did the, the pollution, was it the result of a discharge into the Hobes-St. Lucy Canal?
It was not. They actually went through our site to verify that we did not have any discharge. They did an NTU test at our discharge points and found that there was nothing out of the ordinary at our discharge points. So, it very well likely could have, you know, been from a rainfall event that something slipped in the park or something of that nature. But there was, they tested everything we had and I knew it wasn't going to be us anyways because at this point, we're not discharging anything. We're actually pumping into our systems. So, we're taking water out of the canal, bringing it into our system and start bringing the lakes up. So, I was very comfortable that it wasn't us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comment, any public comment? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? I opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Very much.
Quasi judicial public hearing number two is a request for approval of the South Florida Gateway Planned Unit Development Revised Infrastructure Final Site Plan. Mr. Elam, oh, this is a quasi judicial. Commissioner Vargas, any ex parte disclosures?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Capps.
If I have any, they have been filed.
I don't have any and they've been filed. Commissioner Campy.
I don't have any, they've been filed.
And Commissioner Heatherington.
I don't have any and that's been filed.
Excellent. Mr. Elam, have you filed your things with the clerk?
I'll be of my work history in the agenda item.
And if anyone is going to be providing sworn testimony, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Elam, proceed, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, again for the record, Brian Elam, Principal Planner with the Growth Management Department. This is a request by Lucido and Associates on behalf of South Florida Gateway Industrial LLC for approval of a revised infrastructure final site plan for the South Florida Gateway PUD. This application includes a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. The project is located on the west side of Southwest Canter Highway, approximately 0.6 miles south of Southwest 96th Street in Stewart. South Florida Gateway PUD is a platted industrial development with a total site area of approximately 216.37 acres. The zoning on the property is the South Florida Gateway PUD zoning agreement and the property has an industrial underlying future land use. This application proposes revising the South Florida Gateway PUD infrastructure final site plan for the purpose of constructing the infrastructure along the private Southwest Gateway Place Road so Lot IND III may be platted and conveyed. This application does not propose any development on Lot IND III, which will require a separate site plan application. Development review staff have found the South Florida Gateway Industrial LLC application to comply with all applicable regulations in the comprehensive growth management plan is detailed in the staff report. Review of this application by the local planning agency is not required and staff recommends approval of this application. We move that the board receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as Exhibit 1. We move that the board adopt the resolution approving the revised infrastructure final site plan for the South Florida Gateway PUD project. And that concludes the presentation.
Questions from Mr. Elam.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, Maurice Crady, Senior Partner with Lucido and Associates. And I do have a brief PowerPoint and I'll explain the project. And again, I think for the benefit of the new commissioners, I'm going to go back in time a little bit, about 15 years ago. Okay, so what, so we're here today for the final site plan approval of Lot IND III infrastructure, which is basically required to build the roads and water and sewer to support plat number two, which is the next item on the agenda. So, it allows the construction of the road, water and sewer to support the plat and, and that's the plat number two, IND III. This application is 100% consistent with the approved PUD agreement and subsequent amendments. It's consistent with the approved master site plan. It's consistent with your land development regulations and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan requirements and also the specific requirements that apply to this property. And I'll go into that a little bit more. But this is what the property looked like in 2010. In 2010, if you were familiar back then, I didn't work on the project, but there was a recession and the owner at that time, in the county commission, was trying to trigger some economic development, changed the agricultural on the, on the waterfront to 75 acres of commercial waterfront and 175 acres of industrial land. So, all of that land was in the primary urban service district. And it was, the thought was that there could be some type of, of industrial development that could play off of the St. Lucy waterfront. And so, but what we found out, and I didn't get involved until 2016, when Nancy Neal, who, who owned the, the property with her family, actually, and some other investors, had tried for several years to get development activity on the property. But what we learned is that there is a perpetual Army Corps of Engineers easement on the waterfront that prevents any permanent improvements on the property. So, there is no economic ability for them to develop waterfront and I'm talking about right here, there is a, there is, and I presented this during the 2016 change, which I'll go into in a minute, but it prevented any permanent improvements along the waterfront. So, and the other option was to just develop industrial land, right? So, listen, and, and the industrial land, the only access was at 96th Street in this location. The easement went to this location. So, we had to deal with two issues there. There, the Rundle Bridge, which created a terrible line of sight problem for any industrial traffic entering 96th Street. And none of these people on 96th Street wanted industrial development on their, on 96th, you know, in front of their, their property. So, we were constrained by line of sight. We were constrained by 96th Street. Nobody wants industrial development. So, you know, after six or seven years of trying to create economic activity on a site that didn't work, I got involved and Nancy Neal said, why can't we just move all that industrial development on Canter Highway? Which made sense because that's where the industrial users wanted to be. They wanted to have direct access on a major highway. But that was, that was a challenge too because, first of all, this is, this is the urban service district as it existed in 2010. This is the property that I just showed you that had the industrial and the waterfront commercial land use. It is, was in the primary urban service district. It was 100% in the primary urban service district. All we wanted to do was to move it out here. And the only way we could do that was to access the policy and the comprehensive plan that's been there since 1990 that allowed for freestanding urban service districts for industrial land use in order to create economic opportunity. So, in order to move, you can see, this line here is the old primary urban service district. Okay? The county commission did not want to expand the primary urban service district because if we moved it over here, then there would be this hiatus right here because the, the bold red line is the primary urban service district. The blue line is the freestanding urban service district. This green area in here is the, is the industrial property that was purchased by the county for their operations facility. And that's, that's industrial land that's, so, so what we, the only way we could move that industrial and waterfront activity, we changed the waterfront to industrial, obviously, was to access the freestanding urban service boundary. But we did not increase the amount of land, the 250 acres that was in the urban boundary originally is exactly the same as this 250 acres within the freestanding urban service district. We did not increase it. In fact, we, we, we ended up reducing the amount of land within the, within the primary urban service district by virtue of creating this freestanding urban service. And then, we sold 30 acres of that land to the county. The developer had to build infrastructure. They brought in water and sewer along Canter Highway. They built roads, you know, this Southwest Gateway Place, which we'll talk about in a little more detail. Southwest Neal Street in honor of the Neal family. And Southwest Waterside Place was a donated public right-of-way that provides access to the county's parcel, which I believe is in the development review process now. So, so we did not expand the urban service district. It was just a rearrangement of what already existed to create economic activity. And it worked. You'll go into that in a moment. But so, this is your, this is the, on the bottom here, this is from the county's map. This is the industrial land use. The 250 acres is the same as what it was when it was in the urban service boundary. No residential. In fact, when we made this change, we agreed to two things as part of the comprehensive plan amendment. One, we would prohibit any residential on this property. So, there is in the text amendment, we're prohibiting any residential use within this industrial property. Second thing we did was very important, we prohibited any industrial traffic from accessing 96th Street. So, we built these three roads so that there will never be industrial traffic on Southwest 96th Street. And third, we managed the traffic. We agreed to a maximum threshold of 950 peak hour trips in order to control the traffic and, and target uses that benefited the county without creating a major traffic impact. So, all of these uses are targeted businesses that the county promotes and, and that we've been able to create. The developer built the signalized intersection at Canter Highway that you see on the plan. The developer built all of the infrastructure. The county put no money towards, towards anything, towards this development. And it created the opportunity for an attractive industrial development. You can see, one of the requirements was that we had to build a significant buffer along Canter Highway. And that buffer is, this is over, this is, this aerial is over a year old. It's even more intense now. But that, that is part of the county's requirement with the original PUD approval. This is Southwest Gateway Place looking down towards IND III and these are the existing buildings. This, this property had no native trees on it. When we started, it was all agricultural use and that agricultural use, well, I'll go into that in a moment. But this is again, the, the existing road that we're intending to access by way of this application and just a minor extension to get to IND III. But that, that shows you the existing infrastructure. This is the site plan that's before you today. So, we're talking about this, this lot here, IND III, a little closer view. So, this is the signalized intersection at Gateway Place and Canter Highway. This road is built to here and I'll show you on this aerial that it's actually to here and it goes around behind Lot IND I and comes out here. And so, there's a loop right here. So, what we're doing today is we're extending that, the water, sewer and the roads to access Lot IND III and IND II. And we have a user for these two lots. So, it's, it's a critical point today to hopefully get this plat approved so we can start, submit the site plan for these two users. And what's, what's interesting is that this whole effort was to create economic opportunity and increase county's revenue in terms of industrial development, not put the burden on residential uses. And I finally have some figures. I just looked at the county's tax rolls today and, and this IND I building is completed now and they paid last year $802,000 in taxes. And in 2023, when it was under construction, they paid $72,860. When this site was all agriculture, it was less than $3,000 a year in taxes. This is another completed project. This is a B, Lot B one, I think. They paid last year, it's $312,000 in taxes. When it was under construction, they paid $25,000. This lot is, is under construct, it's been completed. So, you'll see this, their taxes go to probably over $300,000 this year. It was under construction in '24, but it's been completed now. So, you'll see a tremendous increase in that. This Caris Cold, this is, this is approved. It's under construction. These are two buildings going in. I expect that tax bill to be more than a million dollars, probably closer to 1.5 million dollars when it's completed. And, and again, pardon?
That the cold storage?
That's the cold storage, Caris Cold Storage, right.
Your FPL bill will be gigantic and we get the, a piece of that as well.
Well, not only that, this building here paid over a million dollars in impact fees. This, this eight, plus $802,000 in taxes last year. So, you know, the, the revenue generated by this was everything that we expected it to be and more. And, and, and really, the impacts of the county are, are minimal. And the thing that I like best about this is that we didn't compromise the environment in doing this. In fact, the agriculture that was on this property previously was allowed to discharge water unlimited, as much as they wanted, as dirty as they wanted. No water quality treatment, no attenuation. When this was converted to industrial, we had to meet the county's urban development standards, which means we had to retain our stormwater on-site, we had to treat it on-site and we had to minimize that discharge 10 times more than what, less than what the agricultural. So, what was previously discharged by the ag was nitrogen, phosphorus, herbicides, pesticides, all of that, none of that can go into the water now. We, it all has to be contained on-site. We have massive, these are, these are swells behind the, the commercial buildings that you can't see from the road, but all of our stormwaters collected in these stormwater treatment systems, they go into, after that, any overflow goes into the lakes. They're treated through areas of littoral zone and native vegetation. Again, thousands of trees were planted on this property. There was no trees on here before. It was all ag and it was, and, and I, I respect ag. I'm not saying anything bad about ag, but ag on the St. Lucy Canal is not a good thing. They're allowed to discharge water without any treatment at any rate. And I'm sorry, but converting it to industrial use actually is a 10 times lift in the environmental protections that the county requires. And so, you know, with that understanding, I wanted to give you guys some background. We didn't just create a freestanding urban service district. We were, we were trying to do good land planning, put the, put the, the industrial use where it should go on the highway, reduce impacts to the residential areas along 96th Street. And with that understanding, I hope you will support this application and the next application, which is the plat, which basically is consistent with what we're doing today. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner Capps.
Yeah, as far as the buildings that are, have already been built, what is the occupancy at this point? Can you go over that a little more?
I really don't know. I know that the first building has been occupied and I, I don't know the status. I really don't follow that. I just, I follow the money.
So, the whole freestanding urban services boundary is 250 acres?
Yes, sir.
And how many acres are, are available yet to be developed?
We have about, the IND III and IND II are the, are about 80 acres, I think. And then, we have a parcel in front, which is C1, that's about 15 acres. So, there's three more lots that are to be developed. Not including the county's parcel, is 30 acres. And that's, that's the other piece of that, 250 acres.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you for that history lesson. I happen to have been here for, I think, all of that. And it was a process. I remember switching to waterfront and there was great expectation that that would be a clever idea and it was disappointing when it was found afterwards. And then, I do remember hearing, as you mentioned, the folks in St. Lucy Falls and the other neighborhoods there on 96th Street, which is a narrow road. It also has Crystal Lake Elementary School on it. To have the trucks coming and going out of there would not have been the ideal situation. So, cleverly, Nancy Neal and you and others said, hey, what if we did a switch? And the county partnered with you and did that. It wasn't easy, but it's, it was the right strategy. I think one of the important things, and I know my colleagues already know this, but it's a statistic and I'm going to just ballpark the percentages as not to mess it up, that a healthy, economic and vibrant community would have approximately 25% of its tax base in industrial and, and light industrial, commercial, whatever. And I think ours is in the low single digits. So, projects like this, and I know you were sort of almost making light of how much money has already been generated. That's every year, a lot of these numbers. And there's a tremendous amount of employment opportunity. It is west of the Turnpike, so a lot of, and 95, a lot of this truck traffic can easily and quickly get on or get off, get to these locations and not have to drive all through the primary urban service areas that some have to. So, I think this is a tremendous win and for us to do anything but sort of help you continue to expand on your success would be negligent. So, it's my pleasure to approve, make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for your existing, for your changes. Thank you.
Is there any public comments?
You look like a hippie compared to your colleagues.
I'm. Oh, jeez. I'll second. I'll second. I'll second. I'll second. I'll second. I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next item is?
Two for two.
Yep. Quasi-judicial public hearing, request for a plat approval for the South Florida Gateway Plan Unit Development. Any ex parte disclosures, Commissioner Vargas?
No, I have not. It's been filed.
Capps?
If I have any, they have been filed.
And Campy?
I don't have any and I filed it.
And Commissioner Heatherington?
I have any and that's been filed.
And I don't have any and they've been filed. Mr. Aguilar, do you have your work history and all the important information to submit to the clerk?
Copy of my work history is being turned in.
Terrific.
Next to me, one.
If anyone is going to be providing sworn testimony, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Please proceed, Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Luis Aguilar, Principal Planner for the Growth Management Department. I'm presenting a plat application for a property owned by South Florida Gateway Industrial LLC. This is a request by Florida Gateway Industrial LLC for plat approval to add the approximately 32.26 acre lot, IND 3, to the South Florida Gateway PUD plat. The plat is to be consistent with the South Florida Gateway PUD Infrastructure Final Site Plan, which includes a road and utility extensions along the private Southwest Gateway Place. The subject site is a portion of the approximately 216 acre master plan. The subject site is located approximately .6 miles south of Southwest 96th Street and west of Southwest Canter Highway in Stewart. This is over here, a larger scale aerial of the site. And this is the subject site in relation to the South Florida Gateway PUD. You can see here the South Florida Gateway PUD plat number two. And here is the lot IND 3. And this is a larger scale of Lot IND 3. And the plat is consistent with the revised infrastructure site plan. And here you can see the site plan and the lot. Review of plats is not required by the local planning agency. Final action on this application is required by the Board of County Commissioners in a public meeting. We recommend, no, development review staff have found the application to comply with all applicable regulations and the comprehensive growth management plan as detailed in the attached staff report. Staff recommends approval of the South Florida Gateway PUD plat number two. And we recommend to move the board receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as exhibit one, and move the board approve the South Florida Gateway PUD plat number two, including the contract for construction of required improvements in infrastructure. This concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff?
Nice.
Applicant?
Again, for the record, Morris Crady, and we're in agreement with staff recommendation. I have no separate presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Crady?
I'm not familiar with the project. Can you explain it?
Would anyone from the public like to address us on this matter? Seeing none, returning to the board.
I'll make a motion for staff's recommendation of approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On to quasi-judicial public hearing number four, which is a request for plat approval for the South Canter Car Wash Project. Commissioner Vargas, any ex parte disclosures?
If I have any, they've been filed.
Commissioner Capps?
If I have any, they have been filed.
I don't have any and they've been filed. Commissioner Campy?
I don't have any and they've been filed.
And Commissioner Heatherington?
I don't have any and that's been filed.
Excellent.
I have had my car washed recently, but I don't think it had anything to do with this.
I love these car washes.
I'm about to say that.
Mr. Sennott, have you turned over all of your required information to the clerk?
Yes, I'm turning in a copy of my work history and the agenda item to be filed as exhibit one.
And if anybody is going to be providing sworn testimony, please raise, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm John Sennott, Senior Planner with Growth Management. This is a request by USA Auto Wash for approval of the South Canter Car Wash plat. The plat is to be consistent with the South Canter Car Wash Revised Final Site Plan, which contains two commercial lots. The approximately 3.74 acre subject site is located on the west side of South Canter Highway, approximately .2 miles northeast of the intersection of South Canter Highway and Southwest Salerno Road in Stewart. Included is a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. The South Canter Car Wash plat creates two commercial lots with associated access, drainage, and utility easements on an approximately 3.74 acre site. Proposed Lot 1 is approximately 2.42 acres, while proposed Lot 2 is about 1.32 acres. The South Canter Car Wash Minor Final Site Plan was approved on January 16, 2024. The final site plan included a 3,975 square foot, single tunnel car wash with associated infrastructure on Lot 1. Minor technical changes were required to the final site plan to achieve consistency with the plat. These minor changes were approved on February 17, 2025. Contract and security for the completion of improvements in infrastructure are not The site is located on the west side of South Canter Highway, just over .2 miles north of the intersection with Salerno Road. To the southwest, you can see the Publix Plaza. And directly to the north of the site is the Fairmont Estates Housing Complex. This is the approved Revised Final Site Plan. On Lot 1, on the north side of the site, you can see the car wash and the parking areas. And then on the south side is proposed Lot 2. There's currently no development applications in for the proposed Lot 2. This is the proposed plat. Again, you can see Lot 1 on the right side here, Lot 2 on the left side, the south side of the site, along with the associated easements. Review of plats is not required by the local planning agency. Final action on this application is required by the Board of County Commissioners in a public meeting pursuant to Table 10.5 F9 LDR, Martin County Code. Development review staff have found the application to comply with all applicable regulations and the comprehensive growth management plan as detailed in the attached staff report. Staff recommends approval of the South Canter Car Wash plat. Staff recommendation is to move the board receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report as exhibit one, and move the board approve the South Canter Car Wash plat. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff? Applicant?
Hi. How's everyone doing today? Applicant agent for USA Auto Wash, Thomas Nallas. John's prepared essentially the bulk of the presentation, but I'm here if you have any questions that I may answer to the best of my ability.
Questions for the applicant?
How close is the residential area to the car wash?
Um.
Could you pull back the map?
So on the north side, there's an adjacent buffer to our site, but in between the two properties, there's actually a, I believe it's a platted county right of way. I can't, I do not have the width of the right of way in hand, but roughly 20 feet or so.
Mr. Sennott, do you know?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but yes, it's either a right of way or a drainage easement separating the two properties.
That's right.
Have those?
About 30 feet.
Right. Has that neighborhood been notified?
Because this is a plat application, there were no, you know, public notice mailers required. But the yellow development sign has been in place throughout the course of the application. And I did not receive any, you know, comments. I don't recall any calls from that neighborhood.
If it's helpful, the zoning map and the future land use maps are on pages 3419 and 3420.
Yes, the property has the GC, general commercial zoning, as well as the general commercial future land use designation.
Any public comments? Any further comment from the board?
Just one. I guess the question that comes to my mind, and I hear a lot of people talking about it, and you are representing, you're with the company or you're representing the company?
We're a holding company of USA Auto Wash, Summit Wash Holdings.
Okay, so needless to say, we have a lot of car washes. You guys have done your business modeling and your due diligence to realize you're building another one.
That's correct.
We're gonna have the cleanest cars in all of Florida. I mean, it's America and it's a free market, you know, you have to make your smart decisions on what the market will bear. I think we're getting, if we haven't, my personal opinion, if we haven't reached it, we're very close to a saturation point of car washes, but welcome.
How many are there in Palm City?
Within walking distance of each, oh, I guess you don't walk to a car wash, but several. And there's a new one. I see a lot of car washes under construction. And then when I looked at this agenda item, have at it, you know, I just, my only concern for you all would be that some point, I know, I listened to NPR and they said the most profitable business for anyone to enter into is car washes, followed closely behind by storage facilities. So I think that's maybe why we see what we do. I just, I'm very happy that you chose Martin County to invest in with us, but I just wanted to caution you, there's a lot of car washes.
Any further questions?
It didn't sound like a motion.
A lot of car washes.
I haven't heard a motion.
I want everyone to have a fair chance.
You know, this is kind of basic and review stuff for anybody who might be watching on Channel 20, which I'm sure there are not too many, but, you know, in land use decisions, there are four or five different kinds of land use decisions. And, you know, there's the comprehensive plan amendment, which is a legislative decision, a policy decision, where we have the most discretion. And then there's the zoning decision, which is a judicial decision. We still, sometimes we have some discretion there, but a little less than the comp plan amendment. And then there's the site plan. And as you go further through the process, your level of discretion as a commissioner is smaller. And then, so you have the site plan. Now, you guys have been all through these things in the past, the comp plan amendment, the zoning change, the site plan approval. And then the last one is the plat approval, which has the least amount of discretion for commissioners. So if anybody is thinking, oh, they're approving another car wash, you know, we don't want too many car washes. And I share Commissioner Campy's concern about the proliferation of certain types of things that are being built in the county. But this isn't making a decision to build a car wash. This thing has been through the processes in the past, and this is just kind of putting the icing on the cake. It's the last step in the process called the plat approval, which we have very little discretion over. So anyway, just wanted to review those basic parts.
That was great.
Yes, nice.
Commissioner?
Allow me to make a motion that you be allowed to build a business that you think is appropriate in Martin County, Florida, in the United States of America.
Just Elise, Elise Seltzer, Deputy County Attorney. I just want to clarify that the car wash and the site plan has already been approved. So you, we are just approving dividing the property into two parcels today.
I understand, but the residents and the citizens of Martin County think we're approving a car wash today.
That's been approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
This brings us to the end of our meeting, so we'll end with commissioner comments. That's number two. That was the last. I'm gonna talk about that when our commissioner. Commissioner Heatherington?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Campy?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we'll see you this Saturday night, starting at 6:00 PM for food trucks and beverages. Bring, go to a local restaurant and takeout or bring food from home for Music in the Park, Stars Under the Stars. Carla Holbrook will be performing from 7 to 9. She is remarkably talented.
I'm from Indian Town.
And from Indian Town, a native. And she is a local. She's got the voice of an angel. And it'll be a beautiful night. Come to Map Road in Palm City, directly north of the Palm City Fire Station. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Capps?
I'm good today.
Commissioner Vargas?
No, I'm fine right now. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, Commissioner. Just following up on Thursday's conflict resolution, we had a meeting with the city of Stewart to discuss the inter-local agreement between Martin County and the city of Stewart. During that meeting, we presented the concept of amending that inter-local agreement so that we could resolve our differences in our three principal areas that we were discussing where the, that remained within the inter-local agreement, the parking garage, the parking on Stipman, and what it means to support the project. So Ms. Woods and I really, following that, the city representative, Mr. Collins, ultimately said that while they were willing to discuss those items, would not consider amending it without the county revising their agreement with Bright Line. And there was a few things that were discussed in that manner, and I think it's important to point out that the county's agreement originally with Bright Line, which was half funding, half the station, has been subsequently amended to cap our contribution at 15 million. And some of the comments are regarding where the money comes from, whether they're grants or the county's funds. And so the county is relying on transportation funds or gas tax, which is collected from both county residents and visitors, out of county residents. And we're relying on transportation funds from the federal government, which the state of Florida is a donor state to the transportation funds in the nation. So any event, I think that's just sort of some of the facts. Ms. Woods, if you had a few things before, and ultimately, we just, we'll need to know our next steps.
I just wanted to clarify, there have been repeated statements that I view as inaccurate at best. The county is not suing the city of Stewart. I can't say that. How many times people can say it, it is not true. We are not suing the city of Stewart. In fact, the meeting last Thursday was the opposite. It was an approach provided for under Florida law to try to meet amicably, solve a conflict. It's in the statutes for a reason. Ironically, the city of Stewart's used it in the past to successfully solve an issue between the county. So for me, I see it as a positive. It was there not to debate who's right or wrong, but to try to find. It was there not to debate who's right or wrong, but to try to find areas of agreement. And I think our chair and Mr. Donaldson did their best to try to keep that as the conversation as opposed to making all sorts of statements. I also want to make it clear that the county was not asking the city for a bajillion dollars, not at any time have we asked for that money. We brought up the city's comprehensive plan in order to point out, not for funding, but to point out that under the city's comprehensive plan, for decades, they've pointed to the exact site where we're talking about potentially putting the, the station, and it encourages the city, or it directs the city to support that. Doesn't say they have to spend money. I don't, and Mr. Donaldson nor Chair Hurd have made that, that argument. We're not trying to, to make that statement. We were merely talking about the decades-long recognition of the need for passenger rail. The, the other part of this is that our settlement agreement is limited to up to 15 million dollars, and there's a very clear direction that if the county is not able to obtain the grant funding, the county and Brightline, then by, let me get the date, June 30th of 2027, the deal's off. But again, this is an agreement between the county and Brightline, and it does not in any way put a requirement on Brightline. I also would say, from a legal standpoint, federal funds that are already allocated for transportation purposes, the, they can't be redirected for other, other things without an act of Congress and without going through the federal process. The Board of County Commissioners in the state of Florida don't have the power to say, well, we'll take the, we'll take the grant, but we want to use it on this. That just isn't how government works. And I, I think it's important for folks to understand who directs what. But we did, in fact, meet, and I'll turn it over to, to the county administrator, we were not able to reach an agreement at that preliminary stage or to define our issues during our one-hour meeting.
So it's my opinion that we are at an impasse and that further discussion, since there is no ability to, to negotiate amendment to the inter-local with the condition precedent being that the county must amend its agreement with Brightline. So our recommendation is to, if we're to proceed with the statutory requirements, is to, to, to go to impasse and ask the city to perhaps join in on a, an attempt to mediate the agreement with, with a mediator.
Mr. Campy.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to thank you, to our staff, for representing us well, like you always do, but to, to our chairwoman, Commissioner Hurd, thank you. I had the opportunity to watch the event. It was broadcast on a couple of different platforms on social media, so probably right after it happened, it was posted and I had the chance to watch it. I thought you represented us very well. I think that they, it felt, you know, in my opinion, there wasn't much to negotiate there anyway. I think the city's representative was pretty clear, even before going into the meeting, where his position was. That being said, I wonder, without the impasse thing, if, if the real goal here was to get the city of Stewart to write a letter of endorsement of our application process, I think it's obviously public enough that a majority of their board is not interested in any portion of this. So we, we received, if you can remind all of us, a letter from Jupiter Island, Soul's Point, Indian Town, the county, obviously, Congressman Mast, Ocean Breeze, how about, who else?
Our Senator.
Senator Rick Scott. I think, you know, look, I would personally take our chances on the application packet as it's been presented. There have been some new changes with the new administration on what they will and will not fund, what will be classified as governmental waste and not. I think that issue, that's, the, the temperature in Washington is pretty well out, out of our personal control. I would stop asking, engaging, I would not go to impasse with the city of Stewart. If going to impasse is the ultimate goal, is to get a letter of support from them, the parking lot, the Stipman parking, they, everyone, I think that was the only thing you basically did agree on, that they were gonna do it anyway and we were gonna have it. The parking garage has been off the table for a long time, because I thought the biggest benefit of a train station for Stewart, when the initial version still had a parking garage, is there, what I was telling my constituents was, there will be people that live and work and visit Stewart that will never, ever ride the Brightline, but would have utilized a parking garage. The city of Stewart, for many, many, many years, has been lacking a parking garage. Plenty of people don't visit downtown businesses and restaurants because they are frustrated by the parking. Once the parking garage came off the table and it was gonna go to exclusively to surface parking, basically a parking lot, that was a big issue that no longer, I felt, was a benefit for non-train traveling Stewart or visitors or residents, or Martin County. I would say enough with engaging Stewart. I think the back and forth is, could potentially be damaging our opportunities for getting grants, because it looks like a lot of internal fighting and bickering and back and forth. I would leave it alone. Our staff with Commissioner Hurd's leadership, you went there with all the proper intentions to, you know, friendly negotiate, didn't work out, let's just move on. Let's leave that alone, let's stop engaging the city of Stewart on anything to do with the station. We know their position, at least the majority, which is how it works, and so to continue down the road makes no sense to me. And kudos for the effort. In terms of if we don't get the grants, I think I have personally said, if we get the grants, then we'll figure out the station, and if we don't, then we won't. I have no intention of going beyond the dollar amount that we had agreed to, whether it's a 30 million, 40 million, 50 million, 60 million, I have no idea. But beyond what we had agreed to, if we can't get there, that's done. And I think Brightline, in their negotiations with us, agreed that that would be the case. And so that would be my opinion. The only other question I would have is during that process, I hear that people are saying that somehow Boca Raton community, the city of Boca, got some money from Brightline. I would like to have clarification of that. It doesn't have to be right this minute, but at some point in the future, if, if Boca, or if there was any other money, if that's, if it's lingering out there as a nebulous fact, let's find out if it's true or not, because that might have something to do with some negotiations. And then I would focus our attention, whether it's Chairwoman Hurd and you all, going to whatever is legally appropriate to lobby the decision-makers on whether or not we get the grant. Looking like we're a community at war with each other, I don't think bodes well in grant decisions.
Just, just.
I didn't hear a, a resolution to parking. There was no resolution to parking. There was no, there was no head shaking, there was no nodding, there was no nothing. So we still need to figure out parking. We still need to proceed.
I don't understand what you're saying. Parking, the parking lot is owned, is still on county-owned property, correct? The surface parking?
The, the area we were speaking to, there was an agreement that the city of Stewart would produce, produce additional parking on Stipman off-site.
How many parking spaces is that?
I don't recall the, off the top of my head right now.
But it's like 15 or 20?
It's interconnecting, providing additional parking. So that, that was a condition in the, in the group. We agreed and mentioned it, that the parking garage, which is also in the inter-local agreement, was something the county was willing to say that's no longer necessary. And, and then in terms of what their commitment to support means, it was to try to get to at least an understanding of if they're not writing letters of support, is there any other way that they're willing to do or pledge not to do? So I don't, I think we were open to discuss that, but we, we never got to that.
Commissioner Vargas.
Very succinctly, I think we need to let this go. No fighting with Stewart. Take your chances, I just came back from Washington, I spoke with the railroad people, there's no money. This administration is vastly different than what it was four months ago.
I would agree with my colleague on the first portion about letting it go and not getting involved in Stewart. I personally don't agree that, yes, I understand there's a new administration in town, but some rail, rail expansion, rail continuation is a bipartisan issue. I think once the dust settles, and I'm not an expert in Washington, but I believe once the dust settles in Washington, a little bit, you know, they're still within the first hundred days of the administration, I don't believe there will be zero dollars for train and infrastructure. And remember, we're not talking about, you know, first off, even if it was, everything was agreeable, it'll take years to build the station. I have a lot of people saying, when's the station gonna open? Open, long time from now. But that being said, we're contemplating a station for Martin or the Treasure Coast that'll, we, as elected officials, we need to be looking 10, 15, 20 years into the future on the decisions that we're making today. Given the opportunity to create a station here, it could benefit positively our residents 2035, 2040. When we sit on the MPO, we're talking about transportation and road infrastructure plans that are 20, 25, 30 years into the future. In my mind, we have to think about the station in that same regard.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, so I asked that question specifically, is there any money to build? The answer was no. Do you know how many hands are grasping for those rail dollars? We're not the only ones. So, you know, we can continue living in our head about this or look at reality. Things are gonna get very tough economically. And I urge all of you to consider this very, very carefully. If you're a business person successfully, then you'll understand what I'm saying. If not, possibly not.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you about, I don't think we need a letter of support. I think that we can proceed forward. I respectfully disagree. I believe that there is, is and always will be rail grants, and we should just put our best foot forward, because we can highly compete. And as you said, Ms. Woods, that money is coming, going from the federal government to some community, and I would rather it, those are my tax dollars, I would rather it come to our community than to another. So I say we put our best foot forward and we continue to advocate for the grants. I don't think we need to, to belabor this letter any further. I do think the city of Stewart needs to acknowledge and build parking and provide for what they had on Stipman. I don't, maybe this is not the mechanism, the ILA to do it, but they, their residents desire and deserve parking, so.
So if we, if we don't go to impasse, what are the next steps that can be taken?
Well, we will simply proceed as directed in terms of with our agreement with Brightline to pursue grants, and can only, you know, the, there'll be no, the inter-local agreement is still there, but the commitment from the city on whether they build the parking or not is, is just simply unknown. It'll just be, they will build it or they won't. It's, 'cause I believe their statement is.
So I think we still need, there's, that's a loose end that we need to tie up before we walk away from here, is, is at the very least, we need to understand if Brightline feels that there's adequate parking for a station, and we can't provide it. I don't think we have enough land to provide the required parking. We're gonna have to have some.
The, the, the parking for Stipman was really to serve the courthouse and the other residents. The parking within the, the site, Brightline and our agreement is satisfactory. The inter-local agreement with the city to provide the additional parking was to benefit the residents of Martin County and those that are using the courthouse that have sufficient parking, should the Brightline and county parking lot be full with transportation users.
Okay, and I also still strongly favor seeking federal funding to, grant funding to help build the, the station. Mr. Capps.
Thank you for all of your efforts, Chair Hurd and County Attorney, County Administrator.
It's nothing really.
You gave it a shot.
Yeah, it was a necessary part of the process, and appreciate all that you did to try to work it out. I agree with Commissioner Hurd that we, we need to go forward with a mediation to resolve the parking concern, because the people who work at the courthouse are being cramped and somewhat displaced from their parking spots, and they, they need, they'll need parking relief if we're gonna turn that, that area into a big parking area and sort of take all their parking. So, I mean, we, we, we need to go forward with some type of mediation and a negotiation with the city about that issue.
Mr. Campy.
Would that, would that be a, an actual mediation just over that more limited issue?
I would prefer to go to mediation if the, the board being solidly, but I think, but I think if we, if we don't go to mediation, I can still work with the city manager to, to, to try to work on the parking, but it would be independent of the existing inter-local agreement. And, and I would say, at this point in time, I would interpret the city's intent as that they do not plan to adhere to any provision in the inter-local agreement. Whether or not they will still build the parking on Stipman, I don't know that we know the answer to that. So I think I need three of you to, to give us direction. If not, then I think the direction, I hear you, still the parking is an important piece for us to work on, and that would be between the county administrator and the, and the city manager, to see if there is any ability to, to resolve that independent issue, that issue independently.
Would this be a binding mediation or non-binding? It would.
It would be non-binding. The idea is that you have a mutual conflict resolution behind the statute.
Mr. Campy.
Let me offer this as a suggestion. As I mentioned, any station, whether it is smooth sailing or not, is two, three, four years away. Let's use this as a cooling off time to just leave the conversation alone with the inter-local and what you said you would do and what we said we would do. I think it just allows the drum to be continued to be beaten, that doesn't, I don't think is, bodes well for us to continue to show that we're at conflict. If, let's cross some bridges. If we happen to get some positive grant information, that would make the necessary, the necessity of Stipman road parking more important. If we start to see how the station shapes up, we don't know important. If we start to see how the station shapes up, we don't know specifically what the footprint of the station will be. Mr. Donaldson mentioned that, and I do remember it the same way, that Brightline was okay with the amount of parking that we had there for the folks that are going to be using the courthouse for the next two or three years, let's leave it alone. Instead of, I'm not in favor of the mediation. I think, as you just said, it's non-binding. So all we do is continue to pull at each other tug-of-war style for something that you're not guaranteed success. I, I think there's too much noise, too much conflict, too much controversy about this issue. Let the city be the city, and we'll do the county thing, and just move forward. And I'm not interested, if, if you're looking for head shakes, I get what Commissioner Hurd's saying about that's a loose end. Let it be a loose end for 24 months and have a cooling off period, as well as the fact that there's a couple of election cycles. And we'll see what the public genuinely wants us, who they want to move forward on some of these conversations.
But we also, if we would continue to try to negotiate a settlement with the, the city with parking, it shows cooperation.
They don't want to.
Well, maybe.
You sat right there and looked right at them. They're not interested.
That's, that's because they were trying to negotiate, renegotiate our settlement.
They're not going to, yeah, and they're not going to get off of that. And I think we're giving them a lot of extra momentum that's not necessary. And that's all I have to say.
I agree.
All right. Looks unresolved to me. So we'll just.
We might have to go to impasse right here.
We have, we, we'll have to have a discussion later about this. I guess we'll, we'll just take no action.
Okay, take no, thank you.
Right?
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? We're adjourned.
See you all Saturday.